It's 9:01, so we'll go ahead and... Sam, do you... you ready? All right. Looks like everyone else is ready. So we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order for the Tuesday, February 1st, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. First, of course, we'll start off with a moment of silence, and I want to see if Scott DeLeon is in the room. Hello, sir. I would like to go ahead and give you the floor.
Mr. Chair, can you pause just a moment? We have a photo that we want to put up while Mr. DeLeon speaks.
Okay.
Matthew, can you put the photo up?
Yes, just one moment.
And Board, while we're waiting, I'll tell you that this is a temporary setup while IT transitions to the big TV.
There we go.
There you go. Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, Board. Thank you very much. Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. This morning, I'd like to respectfully request that you dedicate this morning's moment of silence to Dennis Bender of Clear Lake Oaks. Dennis passed away unexpectedly last week. Dennis has been a ramp monitor for the Department of Water Resources since 2018, and you could usually find him working at the ramp in Lucerne or down at Redbud Park in Clear Lake. Dennis excelled in his boat inspection and decontamination training, and the picture we provided this morning is of Dennis and a couple of his coworkers after receiving his certification for watercraft inspection and decontamination. Dennis was known for his colorful collection of suspenders, which you can see an example of in the photo. Dennis was a veteran of our armed forces, having served in the Air Force as a jet engine mechanic. He was also a licensed general contractor, and he owned a construction business for over 30 years in the Sacramento area. Dennis was a great ramp monitor, and he took his job very seriously. He was an avid fisherman, and he excelled at talking with boaters at the ramps. He will be greatly missed by our entire department, and on behalf of Water Resources, I offer his family our deepest condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, Director DeLeon. Supervisor Sabatia, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to bring forward when it comes to that agenda Not hearing anything. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is usually a series of agenda items that are non-controversial, and they will be passed in one motion unless someone decides to pull one from the agenda. So is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the agenda?
This is my pen today. I'd like to pull items 5.3 and 5.15, please.
5.3 and 5.15, and we will come back to those in a time to be determined after our timed items and whatnot. Are there any other items that need to be pulled from the agenda from any of the board members?
No items to pull, Mr. Chair, but I wanted to ask Matthew to update the screen.
I'm trying to, and I just asked Jake to stop my screen, Chair. There was an update this morning, and I'm trying to do that.
Thank you, Matthew.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull something from the consent agenda? And I don't see any hands, so I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 5.1, 5.2, 5.4 through 5.14, and 5.16 through 5.19.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. Johanna, can you please conduct the rule call for us, please?
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Randall.
Yes. Thank you. So we will move on to our 6.1, which is public input. Public input consists of items that will not be... that are not on the agenda as of now, and just as a measure, I'd like to remind folks that if they have public comment that we aren't able to comment on that directly or answer questions or have a dialogue back and forth. However, you are free for three minutes to discuss what it is you are concerned about. So I will look in the Board of Supervisors chambers and see if there's anyone that has anything they'd like to bring to public input. Hearing none. It looks like we have some hands in the Zoom room, so we'll go ahead and start with phone 4627. Phone 4627, if you can unmute, and you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record as well, please.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Tom Slate, reading quickly to meet the three-minute limit. Supervisor Eddie, you may recall several weeks ago correcting me after phone callers were muted that I had misunderstood what Dr. Pace had said. I checked. What you referred to that Dr. Pace did say is not what I had referred to. You were incorrect, not me. Why is this a matter? I had stated important facts such as the PCR test that has been discredited, it does not work, and that there's much information indicating that there are early COVID treatments that save lives. You ignored the important information and found a minor incorrect on your part factoid to fault me. This is part of a pattern of avoidance, shall we say, perhaps, awkward topics that I have observed and documented at Board of Supervisors meetings since when I spoke on the video record, June 27, 2006. You all remember what happened that day, don't you? Well, don't you? Of course you don't. You're all new here. You might want to ask Anita what she thinks of me. She might say nothing, of course. She might say, "Don't try to outsmart Mr. Slate." It seems to me that that was tried in a series of three Board of Supervisors meetings, all captured on video, and I think fair to say, it backfired. I spent thousands of dollars and thousands of hours since spring 2002 on research and investigating. But today, I would simply remind that once again, you all have been informed that there is much available information regarding very effective life-saving treatments for COVID, ivermectin and HCQ, for example. How many people have died from COVID or in connection with COVID in Lake County who did not have the benefit of these life-saving treatments? My investigation started in mid-April 2002. Now, there's something new that is profoundly different. What is new in my investigation is that now people are dying. Over time, I believe that relatives and friends of COVID-connected deaths are going to start asking questions, namely, did their loved one have the benefit of the treatments or were they even informed of their existence? As a board, where would that put you? I'm glad I'm not in your position, any of you. I'm not giving medical advice, simply bringing to your attention and not to be ignored. The COVID official narrative, I believe, is by definition very much politically influenced, does much to do with control and little with health. Anyone who even questions it is not well-received. The nail that sticks up gets hammered down. That's how it works. There's always political and social pressure to conform. Uncritically going along with the flow is not leadership. Think about it, and have a nice day.
Thank you. Next, we have Carlos Bono.
Hello, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Carlos Bono, and I'd like to reiterate that there have been 22,607 vaccine-related deaths as reported to the Open Bears CDC website, 121,597 hospitalizations, 115,335 urgent care, 166,738 doctor office visits, 8,952 cases of anaphylaxis, 13,348 cases of Bell's palsy, 11,502 heart attacks. Now, folks, this is just what they're reporting. What they're not reporting is probably much higher numbers. I want to urge the Board to get on the right side of history. This whole thing and backing these poisonous vaccines is going to backfire, and there's already criminal investigations happening in other parts of the world. This is not the UK, Denmark, a whole host of countries have already abandoned all of these ridiculous mandates that are not cutting... they're not cutting any cases down or anything. They're not doing anything. So really, you've got to get on the right side of history. Stop backing, stop supporting these poisonous vaccines. It's going to come back to you. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nikki Hind. Nikki, if you have three minutes, please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Nikki Hind. After last week's presentation and statements by county medical staff, I am compelled to speak out again and again to call upon the Board of Supervisors to show due cause for the continuation of any emergency authorized COVID measures. Even from the medical officer's own slide on hospitalizations and ICU capacity, it is clear that Lake County hospital resources have not been stretched, and it should be noted that his data does not distinguish between patients suffering exclusively from respiratory symptoms versus those with other health issues who have asymptomatic fallen foul of the PCR test. If the PCR test is reliable, then why is it being withdrawn by the CDC? A notice to COVID test providers on the CDC website confirms this and states that assay results do not provide, quote, "differentiation of SARS-CoV-2 and influenza viruses," close quote. In fact, there is a list of 20 different forms of influenza virus that the PCR test does not distinguish between, and the CDC admits this. Yet, at last week's meeting, Dr. Evans assured the people of Lake County that the PCR test remains the, quote, "gold standard." Have we entered the Twilight Zone? In a rational world, this crucial information would already have been factored into public health policy. It's dated July 7th of last year, but in this Orwellian COVID-1984 world, all facts contradicting mainstream narratives are simply ignored. It's not unlike the catastrophic situation back in 2003 when we invaded Iraq over their weapons of mass destruction, only to find that there were none. We have generated a crisis based on case numbers, and now the procedure that produced those numbers is acknowledged as unfit for purpose. Maybe Dr. Evans was right. After all, the PCR test may be a gold standard, not detecting SARS-CoV-2, but as a tool for generating a pseudo-pandemic. It has worked par excellence. Lacking any data that might even remotely support a medical emergency in this county, a supervisor last week shared that his granny was sick with COVID. Oh, dear. I'm sorry if I sound a little unsympathetic. It's just that I've seen this classic propaganda technique before. When all else fails, try anecdotal.
Your time's up. Next, we have phone 1113. Phone 1113, you are next. If you could state your name for the record.
Yes, hi. This is Dr. Will Tuttle calling, and yeah, I'd like to talk about the Board of Supervisors and the County Health Director's response to the COVID situation, and again, what we heard last week from Dr. Charlie Evans, for example, was really, he was parroting untruths from the corrupt and very parasitic organization Pfizer, for example, is probably the most criminal organization in the world in terms of billions of dollars and fines and so forth and harming people. And they're basically telling what we have to believe, and it's absolutely not true, as we've been hearing. To call the PCR test the gold standard is utterly absurd. To say that these vaccines are safe and effective when we have huge numbers, and between Europe and the United States, it's now 9,750,000 injuries and over 60,000 deaths, and that's considered to be between 1% and 10% of the total, probably closer to 1%. So we're talking about millions of deaths, tens of probably hundreds of millions of injuries. And I was just on the phone with a friend of mine from Australia, just as an example. I gave some lectures there a few years ago and met this woman, and she was telling me just last week that where she lives, a friend of hers, a woman brought her two... excuse me, her three kids in to be vaccinated, and right within the waiting room, after just about a half an hour, one of her kids, they were ages seven to 12, one of them suddenly went into just a crisis and died right then. I mean, the kid died and then was screaming, and then she was screaming, and then a few minutes later, her second child died. They both died within a half an hour of getting the vaccine, and then they called the... you know, the doctor said that it was a coincidence, and they're not considered vaccinated because you're not vaccinated until two weeks has gone by, and the media will not cover this. She said the media, the local radio, television, newspapers will not cover it. It's the same thing here in California. These deaths are not being recorded, and people who are dying from the vaccines or injured by the vaccines, if it's less than two weeks, they're considered unvaccinated. So they say, oh, unvaccinated people are dying. Unvaccinated people are sick when it's actually vaccinated. So this is tremendous violence and abuse.
Your time's up. Next, we have Julia Bono. Julia Bono, if you can unmute yourself, and you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. My name is Julia Bono. I also concur with the comments of Dr. Tuttle and others who have spoken about the coronavirus. Anyway, I have a different matter to bring before the Board of Supervisors, and I did mention it last week, or at the last meeting, however, but my questions about it were not answered, so I'm going to repeat it. Since the Lake County Board of Supervisors has a supervisory role when it comes to the municipal advisory council known as the Middletown Town Hall or MATH, I have sent a complaint and cover letter to inform you of the formal complaint that was also sent pursuant to Article 4, Section 5 of the MATH bylaws to the MATH chairperson. Specifically, I have asked the MATH Board and the Lake County Board of Supervisors for a formal review of this problematic election incident and for rectification of injustice perpetrated on me and other issues. As detailed in my complaint, I ask that MATH Board member Monica Rosenthal be censured for the especially egregious nature of the offenses she deliberately committed against our democracy, my constitutionally protected freedom of speech, and common decency that prevented a free and fair election to the MATH Board at the MATH meeting on January 13, 2022. I also ask that the unjust election issue be immediately rectified, specifying my complaint by correcting the improper exclusion of my candidacy for the January 2022 MATH Board election, voiding the resulting unelected MATH Board appointments, promptly setting a new MATH Board member election date in which I included as a candidate, apologizing for the tyrannical suppression of my valid objections and damage to my reputation, and preventing this sort of injustice from happening again by clarifying the problematic MATH bylaws wording I have highlighted in my complaint. While I note that the MATH bylaws mention a one-month timeframe to respond, mine time is clearly of the essence in this particular matter, as it involves an election. I have not yet received the requested response within 14 calendar days of the date of my complaint in order to allow a free and fair election to be put on the agenda and held at the next MATH meeting on February 10 that includes myself as candidate. If you can do anything within your supervisory powers to facilitate quickly rectifying these issues, I would be most grateful. I also now ask two questions of the Board. One, has my complaint been received by all Board members? And two, do you intend to take action to correct this matter? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Morningstar Hoagland. Morningstar Hoagland, if you can unmute yourself and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Great. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good morning. Good morning, Board. My name is Morningstar Hoagland. I would like to bring to the table that I, for one, have been diagnosed with COVID-19. During that time, I was given a medication called ivermectin, which is a preventative... prevents you from being hospitalized. I was given ivermectin, and two days later, the COVID symptoms, the fever, everything was absolutely gone. I felt fantastic. So my question is, why aren't we using ivermectin to help people from dying and hospitalization? This is extremely important, and I'm thinking the reason is because ivermectin costs pennies to make, and the vaccines are doing nothing but making the pharmaceutical companies rich. Pfizer is a huge, huge monstrous company who is getting and staying rich off of these vaccines, or so-called vaccines. I am not against vaccines, just this one, because there is so much data, so much information that I've been doing my research, and they are not safe. They're not safe for me, they are not safe for my family, my husband, my children, or any of my relatives. I do have relatives that are completely vaccinated with boosters, still caught COVID, still were extremely sick. So I don't understand what the preventative stuff is with the vaccines because they don't work, and they are killing people. The data is showing it, but like you say, the media is corrupt, and they are not reporting it accurately. So I ask the Board that, you know, to reconsider and dig deep and look at all the data and the information out there, and I really appreciate your service. Thank you.
I need people to realize that we're not in a laboratory or in a doctor's office telling doctors what to do. That is up to the doctors, that is up to the agency that they work for. We are not prescribing anything from our dais. We are definitely providing the information that is available to us, but at the same time, that is your relationship with your doctor, and if you don't like what your doctor does, then you can go find a different doctor, but it's... we do not have the power, and you do not want to give us that type of power either. There are specific people that make those types of decisions, and that's not us. Just want to make sure people are aware of that because they're asking us to do something that we can't do.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for adding that. That helps. Next, we have phone 2689. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Christina Robertson, and yes, I understand what you just said. You're not being... you're not whatever, you're not deciding, but who is? Because there have been doctors... Did you... anybody there by any chance watched the Senate trials which occurred? Dr. Paul Merrick, 40 years in an ICU, very acclaimed doctor, in tears over patients that he had to watch die because his hospital protocol was definitely being dictated. And these doctors are being marginalized. They're being, you know, basically shown to the public eye to be not the great doctors that they have been, not to have had the great careers, the lifesavers that they are. So when they buck the system and the mainstream narrative, they're marginalized and their careers are ruined. So what's up with that? That does sound like something wrong, and to just repeat the... what you've been told to say isn't really helping. When there's research out there, have you looked at these Senate trials? Have you seen these people who have been damaged by the vaccinations? And that is another problem, and I really am asking that question. I keep talking, but I would like to know. Did any of you watch that? Are you looking at the information that's being revealed? Because, yes, these 22,000 deaths that someone mentioned on CDC's own Vaccine Adverse Reaction website, why are there no autopsies being done? The science has not concluded on this vaccine, and yet it's being touted as actually the only solution. The clinical trial data is being hidden. Pfizer doesn't want to release it. So what... there is something very wrong with this. The doctors being marginalized, have written highly, you know, highly regarded doctors formerly, and they've been peer-reviewed general contributors. Remdesivir, an incentivized drug now in hospitals, is a drug that was used for Ebola, and they stopped using it because of its toxicity. It is shown to cause kidney damage, and I mean, it increases the chance of kidney damage. And, you know, some of the things they talked about were being sort of having their hands tied.
Thank you for your three minutes and your input. Next, we have Jeremy Rarick. Jeremy, you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Jeremy Rarick. Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to talk for just a minute about the rapid antigen tests that are being handed out in the schools. I know right now we have about 30%, 20% to 30% of the kids out with COVID in a lot of the districts around the lake. My kids being two, both tested positive with the rapid antigen tests. After that happened, I tested a lot of things, and I made a video about it. I'd like to send the Board of Supervisors. I tested my dogs, my cat's mouth. I tested a orange. I tested all kinds of different things, and only one came back not positive. So, you know, we're making big decisions based on these antigen tests, and I mean, if you've got 20% or 30% of the kids missing out on education because of a faulty test, it's just wrong. And I think you guys, as the Board of Supervisors, should dig into this and look into it for yourselves. That's it.
Thank you. It doesn't look like we have any other hands up, and is there anyone in the boardroom? I just want to open it up again just in case. Nope, it doesn't look like we do, so I'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you for the discussion this morning. Really wish that, you know, when we're told to, you know, do research and come with factual information, some of you would as well, because my granny is not in the hospital, it's my mother. So anyhow, we'll move forward on to the next item, which is the 915. It looks like we're there. Presentation by RCRC President and CEO Patrick Blacklock. Pat, please come on up and have a seat.
And Matthew, if you can get the slides up for Patrick, thank you.
Is it...
Flip it so the front of it, front part of the button is down. Well, try the other way.
There you go, I think.
You think... not yet? Is it working?
Sam, can you hear him? I think Sam hears you.
Okay, good. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board members, for having me here today. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and visit with you a little bit about RCRC. I'm also hoping it can be very informal, and so anywhere you have a question or there's a topic of interest to you, please stop me, and we can dive off and talk about what's of interest to you. I do have a few slides, though, to kind of help steer the conversation, but again, stop me anywhere you have an interest, if we can go to the next slide. This slide just gives you a quick snapshot of RCRC's members. As you can see, we go from the north part of the state to the south part, and both from the Nevada line to the coast. And we have two primary responsibilities. One is advocacy at the state and federal level, and the other is to be an innovative service provider and to really be there to provide resources to particularly our small-member counties where you might not have the capacity to do it on your own, and so that's a big part of our strategic plan as well. If you can go to the next slide. This gives you a sense of our organization, and probably many of you know RCRC for our advocacy, and certainly that's front and center in terms of our strategic plan and the work we do. But also, we have an Economic Development Division, and it's really meant to be there to amplify your local efforts, to be a force multiplier. And then we have what we call our Business Development Division, which is our incubator for some of our more entrepreneurial efforts, including around broadband, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then along the bottom, you can see the actual affiliated agencies. We have Golden State Finance Authority, which is a joint powers agency. National Home Buyers Fund is a nonprofit. ESJPA is another. National Home Buyers Fund is a nonprofit. ESJPA is another joint powers agency. Golden State Natural Resources is a nonprofit and Golden State Connect Authority is our newest joint powers agency. And I'll talk a little bit about some of those as well and through the presentation. Next slide, please. We did just complete our work on a new strategic plan. The Board adopted it in December and I wanted to point out some of the topics there because I think that they will be of interest to you as well. As you look, we have four goal areas and as you look at the top, working down, equitable access is our first goal area. And you can see that broadband, housing and health services are, are some of the top priorities there. For housing, it's really about trying to help our members find pathways to create more affordable and workforce housing. And we heard that as a continuing topic when we were out talking to counties and developing our strategic plan that increasingly they were finding it difficult to, for teachers, their own staff, et cetera, to be able to find housing in their counties. Uh, for some, it was increasing uh, the migration that happened with COVID from more populated areas in the county, but also the increasing use of vacation rentals was really reducing supply and so asking us to help on that effort. And we're just beginning, as I mentioned, the entrepreneurial side of the house is just beginning to look at that. And then health services is really trying to expand access for health in our rural areas, particularly around behavioral health and substance abuse treatment. For some of our member counties, they may not have a federally qualified health clinic or may not even have behavioral health treatment capacity in the county or substance abuse treatment capacity. So when the state looks at directing more monies for criminal justice treatment, particularly in those areas, and directing it to CBOs, uh, community-based organizations, some of our members don't have that. And so it's looking to how can we assist them in being able to expand that capacity?
I have a question for you.
Absolutely.
There's, and, and I'm kind of speaking in a philosophical way, I guess. There's always the effort to help out with low-income housing or affordable housing now is, is the acronym or, or the, the term for it. But I think that makes things difficult for rural communities because we already struggle with resources, especially financing to make things happen here, to, to provide the quality of life. And one of the things that we struggle the most is teachers, doctors. And with low-income housing or affordable housing, those do not have an attractive starting point for getting those people into our communities. It ends up that they either go into a specific portion of our communities or end up commuting into our communities to serve our community. Is there something that maybe RCRC is looking into? Is there something available at the state for more of a moderate housing plan? So that rural communities can attract that kind of skill set that is absolutely required as a foundation for quality of life? For um, I mean, teachers and, and healthcare is some of the most important things that we need here to be able to elevate the rest.
You're not alone in echoing that sentiment around workforce housing. In fact, if we were to dive deeper into our strategic plan, it uses the term workforce housing for that reason. And you're right, that most of the funding streams are devoted to affordable housing. But even for those funding streams, a lot of times in rural areas, they don't work because the project needs to have oftentimes over eighty units in order to pencil out with the funding streams and that's a tax credit financing. And that leaves workforce hous, workforce housing without any dedicated funding stream. So we're doing two things right now. Short answer is I don't have an immediate solution to suggest to you because I don't think it exists. So what we're doing is meeting with nonprofit developers. We're meeting with entities that represent housing associations to find out, to get a better sense of what tools are in the toolbox and then which ones are available for rural counties, which is a subset of those. And then of those, how effectively are they used? And what we're learning is not really very effectively for those counties that say may want to do a ten to twelve unit affordable housing project. And we haven't found anything really for workforce housing presently. So what may come out of this effort is two things. One is to identify what are the tools in the toolbox that are available now? And who are the both nonprofit and potentially private developers out there available to partner on those efforts? Secondly, what, what legislative changes may be needed to better support rural counties and their housing needs? And that's what we're, we're in that fact-finding R and D phase of it right now. Previously, housing didn't appear in this way in our planning efforts, so it's something that's really over the last couple of years, I think, grown in need and intensity. And so we're trying to get our feet in the rush right now to figure out how we can assist.
Just, let's follow up on that comment because I think it's a great comment. But uh, just here in the rural counties, as we said, um, you know, plenty of grants and other things that are available. But I know the conversation that comes up every time when we're talking about affordable housing, housing loans and other things. It's the income levels and the qualification levels that really make it a challenge. Because what they're saying is, yes, there's, there's grants available, but you really have to be below that poverty level. And we need to really look at those numbers, who can access that? And I think, I'll just go to a specific example. We had a HCD loan after one of the large fires here that came into the county and the qualifier for a single-family home was about thirty-six thousand dollars. So it was a challenge to find folks that were even to qualify for that, qualify for that to spend the money here. And I, I think we're going to run into that as we keep going on and looking at this. So the medium income, household incomes, because you always have, here in the rural counties, we have very hard workers, a good workforce. Usually two people in the family working and then you get above those income levels and it just, it makes it challenging. So I, I really would like to look at that at the state level and obviously HUD and other, there are federal dollars that have a challenge. But I really think that needs to be a part of that process and talk because the more access we get into the housing market uh, with the higher income levels, you know, and I'm, I'm not saying real high, but eighty to a hundred thousand dollars is more realistic to help to keep under that threshold. So anyway, I just continue on those conversations. And obviously doctors and other folks are going to be above that, but we're, what we're attempting to do is get those, those new homeowners in here. And I know you had a slide later on.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about that.
So income levels, I think is another big part is really challenging in the rural communities. Because what we're almost saying is, well, to qualify for these, you gotta stay below poverty level. And that's not what we're trying to encourage. We're trying to encourage growth, next generation change, and that's the challenge. So anyway.
Yeah, another way I heard it from a county was when we tried to do a recruitment, for example, for a behavioral health therapist or public health nurse, we don't have housing for them. And you're right, they're not going to, affordable housing, they're going to be over that income level. I wish I could say that I had a ready-to-go solution for you, but if it's out there, we haven't identified it.
Just want to bring it up on here, that's all.
And so that's part of what we're trying to do is to figure out what can be done. We know there are some programs targeting workforce housing that work in the urban and very high assessment value areas, but they're not going to work in the rural areas. And so that's part of what we're trying to sort out. Part of our strategic plan is to really grow and strengthen our, our advocacy efforts. And part of that is to really uh, try to build on the relationships that Board members have in our member counties and to use those uh, in more effectively going forward. So you'll see more opportunities hopefully for that. Healthy communities, yeah, it's probably not a surprise to see wildfire, forest resiliency at the top of the list. And we'll talk a little about some of our entrepreneurial efforts in that in a little bit. And Sudiva, Simon, it's good to meet you in person since we both saw on the PG&E Underground advisory. I'm used to seeing you on Zoom, so pleasure to meet you in person here.
I know you'll probably want to talk about um, the wildfire issue a little bit later, but I know you've been alerted to our, our tree mortality issue. And um, you know, right now, we're just trying to, we pulled the resource, the, the research together so that we have the data and now we're just reaching out to all of our partners to try and figure out how we can have a strategy going forward to harden our communities and our roadways from that.
Yeah, thank you, Sudiva, for that. I think you've even been in contact maybe with Stacy Heaton on our team. I thought I saw some email exchanges and I took the time to come in on fifty-three and I was telling Chair Crandall, it was really striking to look up on the hillside and see the tree mortality that's so visible coming around that way. So I know that Stacy's been working, is well aware of the issue and last I'd heard, CalFire was coming up to do some assessment work. And so if, you know, it sounds like things are moving forward, but we're a resource if they're not, that's for sure.
They're moving forward and we did have a meeting with Senator Maguire. He asked if we'd been reaching out to you and so I, I think we just need to take some more steps forward.
Okay, I can put a note down, Dave.
That would be great, thank you.
And then infrastructure and economic development is also in healthy communities. And for us, this is, this is really meant to hopefully fill in gaps where, I'll give you an example. The infrastructure bill that passed includes a lot of funding dedicated to, for example, electric vehicle infrastructure. And for a lot of our smaller counties, they don't have staff devoted to developing electric vehicle uh, infrastructure plans, let alone being in a position to go after the competitive grants associated with that. And so what we try to figure out is how can we provide some economies of scale, for example, and potentially be there to help pull down that money and make sure it gets to our rural members as opposed to just flying past them and going straight to the urban jurisdictions, which could take every dollar that's available based on need. And so we try to use our team to look for those opportunities to, as I say, fill in the gaps and make sure that our rural members get connected to the dollars that they might not otherwise just because they don't have the staff capacity to be going after those more competitive processes. And that's just one example there. Uh, I'll go on the next slide. As I mentioned, really, uh, I think that you know RCRC well or know us historically from our governmental affairs work. And this is just meant to give you a sense of kind of what some of the priorities are as they approach the state and federal legislature, the state legislature and Congress this year. Wildfire and drought is going to be at the top of the list for both. Broadband is a continuing topic and particularly as the funds that came through the budget last year now go to the CPUC for uh, rulemaking on how those funds are going to flow. We are actively engaged in those conversations to make sure that our rural counties can effectively grab those dollars as well based on how the rulemaking proceeds on, on two primary areas. One is how the funds are allocated by geographic region and secondly, a program called the Loan Loss Reserve that will be important for potentially financing broadband projects. So those are some of the key areas where we are active. We did start, as some of you may have even participated in a monthly legislative call that occurred uh, last week. And that will be a recurring opportunity to hear the latest, but also hopefully provide any feedback you may have on pending bills and things that you want us to consider and look at as well.
Just to give you an update, I see that you have a CPUC on there and I was on that legislative call and I appreciate that. I think it's a good uh, quick fire round of kind of being updated of what's happening, what's important uh, from the perspective of RCRC. Uh, looking forward to the next one. I believe you said it would be monthly or something like that. It looks like you've been busy because you joined us from your vehicle rather than your office. Uh, but on the CPUC, just wanted you to be aware that we did draft a letter uh, in response to the rate increase from PG&E requesting that that does not happen. Um, we'll see what happens. It's going to be up to the judge. Uh, but also we, we do have some important water utility problems here in Lake County. One of them happens to be in Lucerne, one of them happens to be in the city of Clear Lake. There are private water companies that are only overseen by the CPUC. It is the most, some of the most expensive water in the state of California. Uh, and then when you start looking at the demographics of the community it serves, it's also one of the poorest communities being served by these utility companies in the state of California. And their increases, for example, in the city of Clear Lake, we also drafted a letter to CPUC saying, please don't. But it's a thirty percent increase on top of what it already is. And so just wanted you to be aware of some of our uh, interactions with the CPUC for some of our local issues that we have.
That's helpful to get that feedback. I'm taking a few notes because part of what I like to do is then go back and debrief with the team back at the office in terms of what I heard. And so I try to take notes so that everybody gets a good sense back, back at the office in terms of what, what's of interest to you here in the county. And admittedly, I haven't heard the, we knew water and wastewater was a hot topic, but not the CPUC angle, so thank you for sharing that.
Now, the, the drought is one thing, but the cost of water, uh, when it comes down to it is another. And just for further elaboration, in Lucerne, it's Cal City water and in Clear Lake, it is Golden State water. So Cal City and Golden State.
Cal water, yeah.
Oh, Cal water.
Cal water, yeah. And, and they, uh, and I think it was twenty seventeen or eighteen, they lowered their prices. However, incrementally, they're asking to increase it here and there. They've been working really well with the community. However, it still doesn't take the price down despite the fact that it's a disadvantaged community, so, yeah.
And when I talk about our Economic Development Division, part of what we're looking at too with that infrastructure bill beyond EV is water, wastewater is another potential area where if he hasn't been here yet, our Economic Development Team is trying to go out to meet with the individual counties to catalog your top infrastructure needs. And then we're trying to prioritize within that what we might be able to assist. And water and wastewater is one example where we're going to try to make sure our rural counties get connected with the infrastructure dollars that are available.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, next slide. Just want to talk a little bit about affiliates because they're a little bit less well-known and they may have some opportunities for you as well. And Golden State Finance Authority, which is a joint powers agency made up of fifty-six of the fifty-eight counties and uh, over two hundred cities. And then National Home Buyers Fund, which is a nonprofit, again, an RCRC affiliate, but national. Both of them provide assistance to those trying to purchase homes, primarily in the form of down payment assistance. And so for example, if you have that teacher who wants to buy a home in Lake County and uh, doesn't quite have the funds available for the down payment, they can, that person can get it from one of two places. A family member or a governmental entity and Golden State Finance Authority is that governmental entity. And it can come in the form of a gift. Sometimes it comes in the form of a second. It depends on the type of program that they're looking for and what they qualify for. But one of the things we try to do is get the word out and we work with lenders and realtors throughout the state to do it. And one of the driving interests is we know that community stability is strengthened through homeownership. We know that wealth creation for individuals is strengthened through homeownership. There's a fair amount of research on that. And so this entity, Golden State Finance Authority, really tries to assist in that effort. And if we go to the next slide, you can see that we've had about a hundred and fifty-eight families have been assisted through the two programs in Lake County with down payment assistance. That gives you a sense of the magnitude. We also do energy efficiency programs. So for those looking at uh, pace programming, for example, which is property assessed clean energy, wanting to do energy retrofits, looks like we've had fourteen done in uh, Lake County as well. So those programs are available to anybody in Lake County who has an interest and may qualify for them. Next slide. The next program is our Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority. Twenty-two of our counties are members of this and it's really meant to assist them with regulatory compliance in the waste management world. And so for our smaller counties running landfills, it can be daunting to stay in compliance with not only CalRecycle but the other regulating entities as well. And so ESJPA is a place where they come together. We, we have consultants on staff, technical staff on staff to help uh, guide them through that regulatory compliance process. ESJPA is right now updating their business plan and looking at what the future holds for them and looking at whether they should stay focused on waste management or should they expand, for example, to water and wastewater and assisting member counties with water and wastewater regulatory compliance. That's a question that they are asking themselves and over the course of the next six months, will be working to develop a business plan uh, that aligns with what that answer might be, but to come up with their business plan for the future and to determine if they're going to stay focused on waste management or potentially expand into other areas of environmental regulation.
And I just want to add to that, that I appreciated the support from the ESJPA for the treated wood debacle that we all had to walk through. So thank you very much for that support.
Uh, next slide. Golden State Natural Resources is one of our newest affiliate entities and this really came about out of the recognition that to really treat forests at the scale that needs to happen in terms of forest health, there needed to be a better outlet for the biomass that is otherwise presently not marketable. And so Golden State Natural Resources has come alive to hopefully identify a pathway for that biomass. And we've made a lot of progress and really this is actually the year where the rubber is going to hit the road, so to speak, in terms of that moving from concept to implementation. And the, the, what it would be is to take that biomass that is otherwise not marketable and convert it to what's called industrial pellets. And then these pellets would be potentially shipped overseas as a replacement for coal, primarily in Asia, for their energy production. And so countries like Japan are making the shift to comply with the Paris Climate Accords. They're shifting from their coal-fired plants to a hybrid of either coal and pellets or in some cases wholly pellets. And so we've gotten tremendous in, uh, interest from what we call off-takers, those that do that shipping in the product if we can deliver it. And so now we're focused on actually getting in place the logistics to deliver it. And we've actually purchased two sites. We're about to initiate Sequel on the two sites. And our goal is to get to what we call financial close by early next year where we would actually have the financing in place to go to construction on two plants that went in place and could then be our initial uh, pilot into this concept. And assuming it all works, then it could then be scaled out to other sites throughout California. But we're starting with these two sites and so far it's looking uh, very promising. We've even had conversations with two of the largest pellet producers in the world who continue to express interest in purchasing our product when it becomes available, if not partnering beyond that. So it's looking, it's all green lights right now, I would say, no red lights presently. There's still a little ways to go, so I don't want to say that it's a sure thing. But I think if you were to read some of the forest planning documents, this, this challenge of not having an outlet for the non-marketable biomass appears time and time again. And so hopefully this is going to fill that void and be at the right place at the right time to then allow much greater scale of forest health projects to move forward.
Where are the sites?
The two sites are, one is in Tuolumne County and one is in Lassen County. And those initial sites were picked for a couple of reasons. One is being on a rail line because the volume of product will require rail delivery to a port and then it'll be shipped by a container ship, or not container ship, but shipped to Asia. ship, or not container ship, but shipped to Asia. And then, secondly, it was based on fuel stock assessments within those sites. We obviously wanted to pick sites that, this is meant to be self-sustaining once it's put in place. So we'll need to get some financing for the initial startup costs and construction. The financial feasibility report shows it to be self-sustaining after that. So we wanted to have more than ample fuel stock to allow these initial ones to get started and start running. So that's why those two sites were chosen based on fuel stock assessment. The goal is, and frankly, if I wasn't in the meeting, but my understanding is the Mendocino National Forest Supervisor lamented the fact that there wasn't going to be one on the west side of five to initially start. But the goal is to get there and to ultimately do that. We need to prove the model here with these two sites initially, but we recognize that there's going to be a need beyond that. We are having conversations with PG&E as well. PG&E's vegetation management team has expressed a lot of interest in the project of potentially being a partner. And they may be able to, working with us, be able to transport further distances. It may be possible that you'll see, for example, some of their vegetation going to the plants even over the greater distance. More to come on that. We still have a more fair amount of research to do on that. But the next year is going to be telling. The next year will be when this gets off the ground, hopefully, if it's going to do so. Next slide. And then our newest affiliate entity is Golden State Connect Authority. And this is a joint powers agency that just formed over the last few months. Their first board meeting was in December. Their first executive committee meeting was just a week or so ago. And it is made up of 37, soon to be 38 rural counties. And it's, let me expand a little bit on what its primary purpose is initially going to be. And it's listed into those three phases. But the first phase is to ensure that everyone, all those blue counties have broadband strategic plans. And so for 26 of them, we've submitted a $4 million grant to the Federal Economic Development Administration to complete broadband strategic plans for them, hoping to hear, any day now, in terms of whether that grant is going to be successful. The second is we have consultants on board to act as technical advisors so, and to provide technical assistance to our members. One county, for example, was ready to go potentially with a private, public-private partnership for a community within that county. But they really wanted a peer review. They were relying a lot on what the private partner was sharing with them in terms of the feasibility of the project. And understandably, they were a little nervous about it. So we have experts that can come in, provide that peer review. We're already funding it. It's not like it's an additional cost. They're just there to be a resource when our members need it. But the third item is probably what's most exciting, and that is to actually go in and put fiber in the ground. And the model that we're looking at is based out of Utah, and it's their form of joint powers agency called Utopia. And it's a public access model. And what they do is they go in and put fiber into areas where the private providers are either unwilling or unable to do so. They put that fiber in the ground and then they open it up to private providers to provide internet services through that publicly owned fiber. Think of it like an airport where the public entity comes in and builds the airport, but then private airlines can come in and use it. It's not dissimilar to that in terms of the model. And they have been self-sustaining with each of the financings they've done over the last 10 years. And they've, there were a lot of lessons learned in the early years prior to that. And so we have the advantage of being able to take advantage of those lessons learned. And now that they're on a successful track, hopefully be able to emulate that. The GSCA board through staff is now evaluating about a dozen sites throughout California using what we're calling business evaluative criteria to make sure that the financing will work for these initial sites. We're also looking at ensuring the data to ensure these are underserved, unmet communities in terms of their fiber needs. And the goal, kind of like Golden State Natural Resources, is if we can go in and demonstrate success, then this hopefully will be scalable quickly beyond that. And I mentioned at the start of the conversation that the state had funded a loan loss reserve that went to CPUC for rulemaking on how those funds are going to be distributed. Well, Golden State Connect Authority will need to access that loan loss reserve in order to do the financing for these projects. So part of what we're doing on the lobbying side is making sure that that loan loss reserve is constructed as such a way that rural counties can access it through GSCA. And it's looking promising. Every reason to believe that it will be done that way.
I have a question. With PG&E's 10,000 underground miles, are you partner, is there going to be a partnership there? Because...
Yes. It's been a recurring theme at the Underground Advisory Committee. But even aside from that, we've had some one-on-one conversations with PG&E to suggest to them that we need to find a way to have the answer be yes when asked, is there going to be conduit included in that undergrounding? And that GSCA is ready to partner with them to figure out how to make sure that the answer is yes. And so those, we are supposed to have a follow-up conversation coming up soon on that topic. But rest assured, yeah, we keep repeating it in every forum with PG&E that not only does the answer need to be yes, but we're here to help in terms of we have an entity ready and willing to partner on that. And that message goes to the counties too. Even though we're focused on doing one of these or two of these demonstration sites to kind of get our feet under us with actually putting fiber in the ground, the door is open for counties that are ready to do something sooner than that. And GSCA can provide as little or as much assistance as a county might want. So a county might say, I'll pick an area I know well, Nice. The county might say, we want to put fiber to every home in Nice. And we're going to do, we want to think about doing a public-private partnership. And we've set aside some ARPA money to potentially do it. But we don't quite know what the organizational structure should look like. And we need some technical assistance to figure that out. GSCA could help. Or the county could say, we want to do what I just said, and we want it to be publicly owned. We think we've got a financing structure in place, but we don't have the mechanism to continue to own and maintain this in the future. Would GSCA consider that? Yes. Let's have a conversation and see if we can figure that out. Or could say, we want something to happen there. We've got some ARPA money. We're willing to throw it in to subsidize it. Could GSCA figure this out? Sure. So I say that to say that there's going to be multiple pathways happening at the same time, and they're going to need to be parallel. Where we're working at the, looking at the full-blown project that's based on the Utopia model, but recognize that there's funding coming that you're going to need to potentially move quicker on some projects. We're there to be a resource, as little or as much as you want. I think we're all going to be building the airplane a little bit while we fly it on this. And we want to be there to be a partner with you on that effort. But again, where you need us, where it's helpful to you.
I think the complications of broadband is everybody wants to do broadband now. And I think that only complicates things where you have the ARDOF dollars coming through, you have AB14 coming through, you've got the infrastructure bill coming through. And I hope that we can navigate through all that. So it complements all one another rather than becomes layers of almost competitive ways to get things done.
That's been a recurring worry we've heard from board members. And so one of the things we've done is put up on our GSCA site is we'll have a table that shows all the different funding streams, when they become available, what they're eligible for. We have a glossary. We're trying to work on an org chart because one of the things that's confusing, I think, is how many entities are in the broadband space and who's doing what? And who should you talk to? And who should you, who should you not? If you can go to the next slide, that might help provide a little illumination on what should you be thinking about now. We put this slide together just to recognize that while we're building out GSCA, there's going to be momentum, interest, drive to do something sooner, as I mentioned. And this is meant to give you a sense of what are some options you could do. One is if you don't have a broadband task force advisory group, whatever, you can form one of those. Second is with your ARPA money, potentially set some aside. A number of counties have done that. So they've got some when the time is right. Third, if you're not already doing it, making sure you're identifying your middle mile gaps. And you may be doing all of this, but this is meant to be generic. But identifying those middle mile gaps so that you can be advocating fairly aggressively to the CPUC on if there are any gaps in Lake County and making sure those get considered. And then for midterm, there are some more innovative things that are happening. Nevada County is doing a programmatic EIR so that some of the initial sequel work is done. That then there, I think their hope is that that will incent private providers to come in because it will be one step that's been done to help ease the path forward. You can look at your policies, dig once type policies if you haven't. I mentioned broadband strategic plans, really. What those are meant to do is map out the county, what areas need fiber, what areas may be a long ways away from fiber. And so you're looking at wireless, satellite, other solutions, getting those mapped out, getting those in a plan, getting actionable strategies around those. And then long-term is to get the fiber in the ground or other broadband infrastructure. And that's where GSCA is one option. But you could be picking an area and you could say, doing, you know, requests for ideas or something like that and hear from private providers, how would you do it? What level of subsidy would you need to do it? What would the organizational model look like? And start to get something moving on the, on a specific area so that you can pilot something yourself in that area. And that's what that longer-term idea is meant to be. You look at your question.
I have a request, actually. So we've had conversations with some of the stakeholders here, especially the larger stakeholders, MediaCom, AT&amp;T and such. They've said yes to sharing maps with us, but I do not believe that we still have received those maps. And that's kind of those things that they hold dear so that only they know where the fiber optic is. Is that something, I know that leverage is how I see RCRC being the best asset for the county. How do we work together so that we can use your leverage to get what we need? Is that something that RCRC might be able to help us with is to obtain all that infrastructure map so we do know? Because we keep asking, and it seems one of those difficult tasks to finally get them. They'll say yes very easily, but actually receiving those maps are a whole different concept.
That's been a perennial source of frustration, I think, for counties. Hopefully, with, if we get the grant to do the broadband strategic plans for the 26 counties, that's going to be an essential element. And hopefully by 26 counties working together through the RCRC umbrella, it will have that leverage that you're mentioning. For me, part of the reason for GSCA in this space, we don't have to be the ones to put the fiber in the ground. But my hope is that by being there, it's going to, a little competition's a good thing, maybe, is the best way to put it. And it will spur interest in private providers serving areas that they might not previously have considered. So we're hoping that it will spark conversations and be a bit disruptive to the status quo in a good way, and hopefully get to getting the data layers you're talking about. One last thing I'll add on that is we've actually added GIS capacity in-house at RCRC for that reason. I would love to be able to pull down a layer of fiber and compare it to the PG&E, I'm pointing you because you're in the Underground Advisory Committee, to the PG&E undergrounding project, put those layers over each other and see where fiber exists and where it doesn't. And I think we're going to have to get to that point where we can easily pull up a fiber layer. And you can pick a community, we were talking about Finley earlier, you can pick the Finley and see where does fiber exist there and where it doesn't, and have that layer. And then if you're talking to private provider, you could say, we want to serve this community. We know it doesn't have fiber. We know from our own modeling, and GSCA can help on this, what it's going to cost. And we know what that gap is. So let's talk about what a partnership looks like to get fiber in the ground. That's one option. Another option is to publicly deliver it. That was a very long way to answer your question. I hope I answered it somewhere along the way.
That you're having the same difficulties in other counties, which is unfortunate, but at least it makes me feel that we're at the same place. We're not behind.
Yeah, we had a call from the little community of Winters in Yolo County just, I think it was last week. And they were struggling with the same thing. They don't have a good idea where fiber exists even within the city. And pulling it up from the private providers has proven to be very challenging. So I think this is a, this is a challenge that we're all facing and all going to have to work on.
Thank you.
Next slide. That might be the last. So as we look forward where we focus, well, obviously, we've talked a lot about broadband and our joint powers agency, our strategic plan, implementing that's going to be a big piece of it. And then getting Golden State Natural Resources off the ground. This is a big year and excited about it. And so far, so it's all looking good on that front. So I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have or take any information that you may want to share with me back to the team.
CEO, Simon?
Yeah. Just want to continue that conversation on the advancement of the electrical charging stations and, you know, all that technology that's coming down the road. Obviously, everybody sees fueling stations now. And a decade from now, it's going to be different on how you're fueling your vehicle because of the mandates that are coming. And I really want to make sure in the rural counties, and I know you guys are thinking about this, but continue that focus because it's the same challenge we're going to have with folks being able to afford homeownership and rents and everything else that's going on in rural communities. Now, you've got to buy an electrical vehicle. You've got to buy a charging station, put it on your home. And that's going to be a real challenge. I know that California and the budget has put some stuff for low-income homeownership and home charging stations. But for us here in the rural communities, to really make sure that we don't miss out on that as we're moving forward. Because that's, that's going to be the next challenge, I think, in this transition to the electrical vehicles that are coming our way. And it's happening here in Lake County. You know, more and more folks are, you know, buying the hybrids and other stuff. But it comes down to that challenge. If you don't own the home, where's that charging station going to be? I can't put it on my apartment or my rental home. So looking at that, you know, because it's just going to make the poorer folks with another challenge. Not only had to get that electric vehicle, but now I got to find somewhere to charge it all the time. So real challenges, I think, coming down the road. But we just need to be doing that. I know locally, we're going to be talking about an item next week called the REN Rural Energy Network, you know, with the CPUC, Lake EPC. I'm going to bring it to the board on behalf of our Lake LTA and APC board and talk about those rebates to go to increase those rebates in our rural communities. So just want to make sure we stay focused on that. Obviously, fire resilience and other things are a challenge. But what I did like to hear is the capacity issue with RCRC, really understanding that our rural communities, that's where we're lacking. There may be billions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars out there right now for fire resiliency, forest management and stuff. But the challenge we have here locally is we're tapping out our nonprofits, the agencies, and ourselves to make sure that those dollars are coming to the counties so it can benefit the most vulnerable. And that's the challenge we're having. We're doing our work and trying to have the conversations. I think there are opportunities there. But if RCRC would just help with that, say, hey, listen, Lake County, this is a great grant we think for you. Here's a resource. We'll provide the technical assistance to get through that. I know Cal U has a stepping up in the state also to helping some of those things. But that's a real challenge right now. So just continuing that direction. You know, thank you for that focus at this point, but not let it go past, you know, how beneficial it's going to be in the future for us.
It's affirming to hear you make those comments on EV infrastructure because that was a very question we asked our officers yesterday, which, and we've been asking the COs as well, because we're moving fairly quickly to try to position ourselves around EV. But we didn't want to get out over the front of our skis with our members. We wanted to make sure that indeed, this is something that our members thought was important too. And to your point, it may not be, as some of our mountain counties would say, we don't have a lot of Teslas. But the Ford Lightning, that I think the first couple of years of production, on the pickup, EV pickup, is already sold out. And the Chevy Silverado pickup, as I understand, the reservation sold out in 12 minutes. And so I think the concern is more from an economic development perspective, is to making sure our rural members are prepared when fleets start changing over, for example, to electric pickups. Is the infrastructure there in that county to support it? Because if not, there's going to be an economic consequence. And so setting recreation and Teslas aside, I think that there's going to be a commercial impact. And it seems like it's accelerating that switch over. And like, as you shared, I'm concerned that it'll be like broadband, but 10, 10 years from now, it'll be similar where the capacity isn't there if we don't prepare now. And in particular, with the infrastructure bill having the dollars specifically carved out for EV, that's why the moment is now potentially for RCRC to step in and figure out a way to provide economies of scale in getting that. So our team's going to be back at the NACO Legislative Conference next week. And as part, we'll be advocating to try to find a way, a pathway to funding going directly to the rural counties so that they can complete EV infrastructure plans for each of the counties and then come up with actionable strategies that then the remainder of the funding could potentially fund. So that those resource constraints don't limit you in potentially being able to get that done. We're kind of following the same model we did with broadband on that, to where we can help administer it and get that done for you, for counties that want to do it, for counties that want to opt in. So long story short, thank you timely to get that affirmation. I appreciate it.
And it all goes with the economic development and obviously the long-term health of, you know, our communities. Because it's a challenge. Everybody's used to, hey, you put up a gas station. Well, that's going to change here in the next state. It's going to be a charging fuel station that's lined up and kind of, the technology is advancing as it goes there for media marketing, everything else. So the opportunities are going to be there tied to economic development. But standalone stations like this too, battery, solar, generator, always being able to back up, it's going to be an investment into our, you know, health of our mother earth as we move forward. And it's going to make some unique opportunities. So they're here now. People are starting to design these things. There's plenty of names out there, but understanding how we move forward. And we know that some of the rural communities, at least in some of the areas, I just saw a story where the community of Yountville says, no more new gas station, no more fueling stations. But, you know, so that transition's happening. We've got to be prepared for that as we go through. Not something we're talking about here, but I'd just say a neighboring community has made that decision. And so now the next stations are going to be built, are these EV charge stations? How quickly can they, you know, you get in and out and what that process is? So I just want to stay focused on it because I see that as an opportunity here for rural communities to really get ahead of it because it's less challenging. You don't have millions and millions of people you got to charge. You've got 67,000 people here in the county of, 50% of it is electric. We've got to have that ability to get that done.
And they commute further.
Yeah.
That's, that's the biggest issue is we have people that can commute 100 miles a day. And we have to have that availability for those people even commuting around the county.
And I think it even goes further than that. I appreciate the comment and the discussion on this. It's also the people that want to come and visit and enjoy themselves and recreate in Lake County. They want to go home at one point. And if there's no place for them to recharge, it's going to be quite difficult. I think that the important part to that is not so much at setting up the EV stations. I think we're going to get there. And we need to do a better job of implementing AB1232. I know that RCRC has been trying to get us on there. And we're going to get there. A little behind on the mandate from the state on that one. But I think it's also an issue of the CPUC ensuring that PG&E is providing us the capacity to carry all these. Because it's easy to set up stations that take hours and hours and hours to charge up your cars. But when you go to the urban areas, you have the 15-minute stations that can fill up your battery in 15. And that's the kind of stuff that we want because it's not going to work out if everybody has to wait an enormous amount of time. Granted, please stay and enjoy yourself during those three hours. But it doesn't meet the actual technology that's available. It just keeps us behind again and again and again. And it's, we need that better capacity. It just keeps us behind again and again and again, and it's, we need that better capacity. We have transmission lines that come through here that end up in these suburban and urban areas, but we're not provided that same level of capacity that they're being provided. And so we need the CPUC to create an equity across the state of how much power is available to us, because it's going to be more demanding.
And I could imagine that being another one of those data layers. We talked about broadband earlier, but the same could be true of energy capacity, EV capacity, having a GIS layer that shows up for each individual county and where the gaps are.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, last comment here. Obviously, I know we have the pilot program going for the pellets and the fuel, but put Lake County on that list for more conversation. So, you know, because I think there is an opportunity there. We have I-5101, obviously, we don't have the train, but we have an opportunity for, you know, a main thoroughfare both ways, and we're looking at enhancing that through Lake County with Caltrans and other things. So just thinking along those things, oh, we're going to plug it while we're here in Lake County, please, you know, as we move forward. I know, looking to expand, it's a pilot program as we, as we move forward. So one, one last final comment, too. Today, you know, I just want to make sure, in rural communities is where most of the tribal nations are located, and that communication and collaboration, I think, with tribal nations is very important. There's a big conversation going on in this country about equality and inclusion, and the indigenous people in this country, you know, really need to be at that table. And I know it's a challenge, obviously, not every relationship is, is perfect when you talk between government agencies or tribal nations and local rural counties, but it's real important, because I look at it as an opportunity for involvement and inclusion, where it can enhance the lifestyles that are happening for all residents in the county. So I just want to make, take the opportunity to make that statement today. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'll make one final comment, and I apologize, this is somewhat of a soapbox, but the state of California is really into the idea of equity, but I think it fails miserably in how it implements it. It implements it at the population level, but it doesn't implement it at a government agency level. So every county is not equal, but yet, we all receive 1% of our sales tax back unless we have an extra tax on top of that, then we can add on to that. But in a poverty-stricken area, it's difficult to add that. And yet, we want certain people and population that meet certain criteria to get a hand up so that they can get into a better opportunity and a better place, but we're not doing that with counties. And I think that, I think that our idea of equity is made more to appease voters than it is to actually make the true change, because if we can get some of the extra benefit of equity in this county, we could do so much more to help our people rather than them being helped from a different indirect way. And I brought that up to the state, and they were kind of stunned and didn't know how to answer me, when, if you really believe in equity, how come we're treating Lake County the same as San Francisco in the way that you return? And even then, there's grants made available, yay for us, but if we don't have staff, we still can't get the same access level to grants as somebody like San Francisco would be able to. It would be really nice if that word meant something across the board rather than in a very niche area that helps the people that are making these decisions, because we could make great strides if we were just provided that leg up that we can't always have access to. And things like CSAC and RCRC are always helpful to us, but it would be nice if the state can see that equity is more than just people, it's also how we create the quality of life in the environment that the people live in.
Oh, that makes perfect sense. You look at the social determinants of health and having an investment that's oriented to that as opposed to a population density, I can understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So thank you for listening.
Yeah, so I'll add a couple of things. I think I'd like to let everyone know that since I've been working, we've been working with RCRC, and then since Pat's taken over, I know, as the president, he's been very engaged when it comes to not just our county, but also with the local tribes, with the situation we were talking about with broadband. He asked for some information and got him some of those contacts. Dan Miller is the new president from, from.
Dan Miller?
Yeah. And so he asked to be, me to be on the regulatory committee, because there came, a discussion came up about some policies that involve tribes. And so they've been very engaged with me, trying to figure out how we can make that verbiage sound a little more up-to-date, you know? We know that these things change with, with time, and so just, I just want to highlight that RCRC has been very responsible in that, in that manner. So not only that, but Pat's vested, he lives in, he has a house in Nice.
And conversely, we've appreciated your participation. I know that takes extra time out of your day when you're trying to already help your constituents, so thank you for that.
Right. Excellent. So I think I'll open it up to the public unless there's any other comments, just in case. I don't see anybody on Zoom, anybody in the chambers here that would like to say anything? Bring it back to the board and.
Just letting you know, a hand popped up in Zoom.
Oh, there we go. Actually, yes, there is. Betsy, you, if you can unmute, and yeah, you have three minutes.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Blacklock.
What's that? Okay, I think we, you just muted right, it went right back to mute. There you go.
We'll try again.
There you go.
Thanks. So I have three questions. The least, the least of those is, what do the initials CASF stand for? That's one question. The second is, does RCRC produce newsletters that are available to the public about these projects that you're working on, like a monthly thing like NACO does? And the third question is, is there a method for the local public to advocate for the needs to RCRC through the local appointed representatives? So my understanding is that one or more supervisors is appointed to the RCRC committee. I'm getting the impression it's Mr. Crandall. If we want to participate in addressing some of those subjects you spoke of today, how would we do that? Thank you.
Want me to respond? So I think he said CASF, I think maybe you're referring to the California Advanced Services Fund, which is a fund for broadband infrastructure. If I'm, at least that's what it's presently being used for. I'm guessing that's maybe what the CASF reference was to. Secondly, on newsletters, yes, you can go to the RCRC website and sign up for our newsletter there, and it will be available to you. You can also find additional information on board meetings and such, which are open to the public. And then lastly, the question of local appointees, yes, it's through your local supervisor, you're designate to the, designate to the RCRC board, in this case Supervisor Crandall, that you can provide input that then ultimately Supervisor Crandall can provide to the RCRC board.
It also is on the, all of the minutes and agenda, everything is on that website as well. Okay, is there any other questions? I don't see any as of now. So it looks like we are finished. Thank you, Mr. Blacklock.
Thank you. Appreciate the time today. Thank you for the feedback and good information.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break, and we'll come back at 10:25. All right, welcome back. Sam, we're good? All right, Sam. So it looks like we will move back to our consent agenda items that were pulled, 5.3. So let me read it for you. We have waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, or services, sorry, and approve the agreement between County of Lake and Adventist Health, St. Helena, and Vallejo for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations for fiscal years '21 and '22 and '22 and '23 for a maximum compensation of $300,000, and authorize the chair to sign. And it looks like we have Director Metcalf on and the full shores.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and other members of the board. As you may recall, this item was presented last week as consented into item number 5.5. And during the discussion, it was pointed out that we had neglected to include Lake County Code Section 38.2 verbiage asking to waive the formal bidding process due to the unique nature of goods or services in this, in this agreement. So the board memo accompanying this item has been corrected with the appropriate verbiage, and so I'm just bringing this back to the board, asking for approval of this item.
Okay. And is there any supervisors about here? Go ahead.
Yes, so there was a couple layers of things I wanted to go through here. Let me just start with a quick question. This is for Adventist Health, St. Helena, and Vallejo. In the contract, it only talks about Adventist Health, St. Helena. There's a space where it speaks of the contacts, and it says it in title, but it doesn't say it in the context as to who is actually on the agreement. Wondering if it's kind of a corporate headquarter that covers both that's in that contract, or if it, because it says St. Helena on the, and I'm trying to open it right now to look at which page that is. But, you know, in the agreement, when it says County of Lake, and it has all the name and the address, and then next to it, it has who we're contracting with, right here on page two of 16. And so it only talks about Adventist Health, St. Helena, 1509 Wilson Terrace, Glendale, oh, it's in Glendale, California, but it says St. Helena. Just wondering if that still covers Vallejo.
As far as I know, it does. I think Elise Jones might be here with me just to confirm that, but this is the way it's been done up in the past. I believe that's how the parent organization is listed.
Okay. I just wanted to check in on that, since, again, I didn't see it in there specifically.
I can point you to item 4.1, which is the description of services indicating the two different facility locations.
Yes, and I saw that, but I just was wondering for signature purposes, since 4.1 is on the exhibit, this is in the, a different area. But anyways, so moving on, as far as for the waiving for bidding, I want to talk to the board. I started questioning the waiving of the bidding. It was requested that we review the purchasing ordinance to match the, for lack of a better term, the rhetoric that I was providing for why I did not want to support the waiving of the bidding. We approved the update of the purchasing ordinance, and I'm going to read to you 38.2 right now. 38.2 says, "The unique nature of the goods or services precludes competitive bidding. Use of this criterion requires documentation demonstrating both why the goods or services contracted are unique and why competitive bidding is precluded. Appropriate documentation shall be attached to the memorandum of the Board of Supervisors at the time the item is submitted for consideration of agenda placement." On our agenda, we have a list of folks that provide this type of service, so it is definitely not unique. There is also no documentation to provide us the reasons to approve the waiving of the bidding. I'm asking the board, why did we update the purchasing ordinance if we're not going to follow the purchasing ordinance? I'm struggling to understand where we stand on this. And I think it's important to know that in 1920, we spent about $7 million in contracts for behavioral health. Last year, we spent $9.2 million in contracts, and currently, as of today, we're at about $9 million in contracts. There may be some amendments coming up that extend some of these contracts. We have gotten zero reports to let us know what is truly happening in the outcomes of our patients. Patients that go through behavioral health have the possibility of reaching a goal where they do not require behavioral health services, or else they would not be a behavioral health client. So if you have like dementia or Alzheimer's, that is not something that you can get rid of, and that is not something that behavioral health can help with. Behavioral health helps when we can provide assistance to get you into a better position, to become more independent, maybe not completely independent, but more independent. And so to me, it's important to understand where is that $9 million going, and what are we actually getting out of it, rather than just saying yes and signing on these documents? Nothing has been provided. It's been requested. And here in front of us, not only do we have a 21, 22 item, but a 22, 23 as well, pushing the potential of when we will be doing an RFP for another $300,000. And I just, I, I question what our message is. This is important to know and understand every time we say yes, what it is we're saying yes to. And other than, I know that it's psychiatric hospital services, I have no other knowledge whatsoever to understand what exactly we are getting out of this. It was provided some information from Director Metcalf as far as the number of people, but again, outcomes to me is one of the most important thing when it comes to any type of healthcare, whether it be behavioral health or hospital healthcare. Just placing somebody is not good enough for me to know that we're doing so, knowing that we're making sure that they're getting the service required is even more important. This is part of the RFP process, to look at what kind of different services, what kind of different areas are willing to provide this service, and we're, we're continuing to allow that to happen without any kind of accountability whatsoever. And so I'm kind of, this is kind of a plea to the board, when are we going to hold our departments accountable to this and us accountable for the rules that we also made? Because this, this does not fit 38.2, and it has not fit 38.2 since before the update of the purchasing ordinance, including the renewal of the purchasing ordinance. And I would like to hear why it's okay to waive the bidding, looking at 38.2.
Can I, can I add something?
Yes.
Supervisor Batier? So as far as documentation justifying why we want to waive the bidding process, there is a list that was attached to this that comes from the Department of Healthcare Services that outlines the facilities that we, the only facilities that we can contract with. As also, I believe, stated in the board memo, there's an increase in need for hospital beds in facilities like this throughout the state, and in the meantime, there's a decrease in availability of beds. We already contract with most of those facilities on the approved list, so that's why going out to bid doesn't make, doesn't make sense, because we're stuck with this list of facilities that already has waiting lists for folks to get in, and I'd be concerned if we went out to bid and then didn't renew a contract, that we wouldn't have a bed space available for a client when we needed it.
And I think that there's a lot of assumptions made in your statement. You said most, and we don't know until we know, and that's what the bidding process is all about, is to make sure that we know. And that's, that's just my position on that.
Is there anything else anyone would like to add on the board, or?
Well, I would be more than happy to try to gather data from each one of these facilities that we would have to go out to bid for, to find out what their waiting list time is, but I do know that they are quite lengthy. But I don't have that data in front of me at this moment.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, Supervisor Batier, I know we had had this conversation as the board, and Director Metcalf, you know, I think we made it clear by updating our, you know, our policy that we had gone through and stuff. So I know last week, I was one of the ones that made one of the motions as we move forward, but I think it's been made very clear, at least by myself, voting on updating the policy and those things, that we do need to start really going out and start looking for these bids. And we may have to do that. I think it's a three-year term when it has to be turned around. But yeah, I can't be any clearer that at this point, probably going forward, I'm probably going to be changing my votes as we move forward. If it can be justified, yes, but the work needs to be done. We've been asking for it, and I haven't seen anything either as it comes to the board. Every time it's waive the formal bidding process, and I understand this, this is very near and dear to my heart, and I don't know the rest of the folks sitting on the board, but related to a lot of people in this county, there are a lot of mental health issues, there are a lot of behavioral health issues that need to be dealt with. So it's not something easy to make decisions on, but from a standpoint of doing it here at the diocese, I think you'll see it reflected today in my vote on this item.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and open it for public input. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to come up and say anything? Not seeing anyone, we'll go to the Zoom room. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for comment. Supervisor, Vice Chair Scott, sorry.
Is there a way that we can approve for fiscal year 2021-22 and then go out to bid for the 2022-23 to at least make sure that we have these beds secured and available for our constituents? Because I know there's many that wait days, weeks already to get into these facilities. So even if we have beds secured, they're usually full, and we have people waiting that need treatment.
Director Metcalf, did you have any?
If we could make that change, I don't see why not. Elise, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could certainly adjust the time period in the contract and either bring it back, or if you could approve as amended today.
May I just please interject? Yes, that's true, and we're not always in control of where Lake County beneficiaries are placed. Lake County beneficiaries may be in any other county in California and enter into a psychiatric emergency, and will be placed by the county that they have the emergency in. Sometimes they contact us, they don't have to. And so we may get invoices from this hospital or other hospitals that we were unaware of, and the law states that we must pay those invoices. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that.
Hold on. I think we've been caught in this kind of difficult place where we didn't want to disrupt patients, and we didn't want anybody to not have placement, but you're right, we do need to, you know, we're getting to the end of that grace period right now.
Supervisor?
And I just want to respond that it's, a bill is a bill, a contract is a contract. If we're making a contract for 22-23, we place people there too, and that's what the contract is for, is to ensure that there are beds. A bill is something that we're supposed to pay. So I think that there's two separate items being discussed here, because you can't talk about a bill for things that we're forced to pay that's in the future. We are creating a contract to be able to place people there ourselves, and if there happens to be people that are placed, then we will pay them under the same contract. So I think that if it was only about what happened yesterday, then I would agree with you, but since we're foreshadowing the future, but with the contract into the future, then I think that that becomes a moot point.
And so County Council, Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just say, and certainly Behavioral Health can correct me if I'm wrong, but the agreement as it stands is not an exclusive use with this facility for the timeframe. It is simply an agreement that when the county refers patients, that this entity will take them. The point I'm making is that you can continue using both years if you don't need the service. You don't have to use it. Do you see what I mean? You've got kind of a placeholder, but you would not have to use the services. There's also a 30-day termination clause, so depending upon how things go with RFPs, you may be able to just approve this agreement if it's your desire to do so without amendment, because you're not obligating yourself. The referrals are completely within the discretion of the department, and I would ask the department to confirm that.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Grant. Yes, that's absolutely correct. I mean, I like your term as this being a placeholder, and as it does say, I mean, this contract amount is up to a certain dollar amount. It just assures us that we have a quote-unquote reservation at either of these places in case space is needed.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The point I'm making here is your board could approve it as is. It does not in any way contradict or negate the point you're making with regard to putting things out for bid.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier? Yeah, okay. Supervisor, or Vice Chair Scott?
I guess my next question would be, by going out to bid, are we jeopardizing our placements that we do have secured at all? Because I know everybody's fighting for beds and placements. Would we be jeopardizing beds that would be available for our constituents?
You know, it would be interesting if we did go out to bid, because none of these facilities really care about our business. So it could potentially, it could potentially lead to loss of bed space and clients being put out, you know, on the street.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I struggle about the topic of bed space and being concerned. It's February 1st today, and we're looking at a July 1st contract. So seven months into the year, we're now concerned about a contract for beds? I'm struggling to understand how that is such an important reason for why we have to push this forward. In my opinion, contracts should be before things happen. I get it that we don't know when others are automatically put into a facility that we then have to pay for. I get that point, but I'm, why is it all of a sudden such a concern when we're seven months into a year? I'm struggling to comprehend that. I get it, and I think we should have that, but I think there's a process in order to be able to do that. But I just, I have to temper down that statement, that if we're so concerned, why are we in February looking at this contract?
Well, Supervisor Sabatier, Supervisor Sabatier, as you saw in the information I sent yesterday, I mean, we already have folks placed in these facilities, and so if we made a change to that, we'd have to somehow move them somewhere else.
And somehow they've been placed without a contract, which is a different topic.
Have they been placed without a contract currently, or?
Yes, we have $100,000 worth of invoices.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments before we take action? And is it, I know that Vice Chair Scott, you mentioned making an adjustment to approving this year's contracts and then not putting forward the next year's, I think it's 22 and 23. Are we looking at that, or?
Well, Anita pointed out that even if we were to agree to this contract as is, we would not be saddled with having to move forward if we went to an RFP and found another provider. So even if we did approve it as is, it sounds like we would be able to move on to somebody else if we went out to RFP.
Okay.
So I would be fine with that, as long as we are going to be moving forward and doing the RFP process, and I think it would be good to see how that process plays out, and if we do get bidders, and just, I really hope that we don't in turn end up hurting our community because of it, so.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I'll just be candid, I won't be voting for any amendment as far as this, the amendment is concerned, because to me, it's the waiving of the bidding that prohibits me from voting yes on this. But I would add consensus to get the RFP and make sure that it's accomplished within a certain amount of time, because if we approve 22-23, my gut tells me that we won't see this again until 22-23 is over. And so I would add something that says that we need to see an RFP within a certain amount of time.
Vice Chair Scott?
And I know capacity is an issue too with the Behavioral Health Department, which is no excuse, but is there maybe, Carol, a way that admin or another department can help with the RFP process if they are struggling with having the capacity to do so?
So we have a template for doing RFPs. It's not a real-time consuming task. They know the scope of work that they're looking for, because they have the scope in this agreement. So honestly, I think an RFP can get out, you know, with probably four hours of staff time, something like that. It's not a large time-consuming task. And given what the director is saying about these businesses that provide this service not really caring about whether Lake County places their patients there or not, because they have more demand than there is supply, you might find that you get zero responses to your RFP. That's possible, because they don't have to compete that way, but at least it will have addressed the need to ensure that we're getting the best bidding, so the best pricing. And so it can be done relatively quickly, and then you'll see what you get. But again, since, you know, this is really a provider market here, they may not even respond to the RFP, and then you'll know where you stand. And you can continue as you have been.
Supervisor?
And as was stated by Supervisor Simon, if there's an RFP and there's only one bidder or zero bids, at that point, you get three years of not having to do an RFP, but it's nice to reoccur, have that reoccurring RFP every three years, because things change. Right now, behavioral health is a hot, hot topic. We're going to see money that may be funding new facilities, rather than seeing what we've been seeing, which is a decrease in facilities. And so I think that the way it's set up is very clear, that if there's no competition, then we're not going to ask you to do that every year. If there is competition, that maybe we go ahead, that we do that, we continue that process. But it's better, in my opinion, the amount of dollars that are being spent from the public funds that we receive, that it's the right thing to do to try and make sure that we're providing the best service at the best cost. Doesn't mean it's only at the best cost, and it doesn't mean it's only the best service. There's still some discretion when going through the bidding process. So I'll just stop there.
Okay. I don't see any other comments, so I guess we'll just move forward with any action that anyone would like to do.
Did you do public comment?
Oh, yeah, I opened it up for public comment, but I'll reopen it just in case. I'm not seeing anyone, and I don't see anyone in the Zoom room, so I'll bring it back and close it, and go from there.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to unique natures of goods and services, and B, approve agreement between County of Lake and Adventist Health, St. Helena, and Vallejo for acute and patient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute and patient psychiatric hospitalizations for fiscal year 2021-22 and 22, 2022 and 23, for a maximum compensation of $300,000, and authorize the chair to sign. And adding that for this to go out to an RFP, shall we say, in the next three months or before the next fiscal year? I don't know what would be the best to put for that.
I think you should have the RFP go out by the end of this fiscal year, before June 30th, 2022, and our office would be happy to assist.
Okay, so that's my motion.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Scott.
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Scott, and a second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, please conduct the roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
No.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
No. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you for your time, Director Metcalf.
Wait a minute, Supervisors, that failed, so we had three no votes, didn't we?
But what does that do to these patients that are in these places?
That is a really good question, and also, we understand there are outstanding invoices as well for patients that are in these places. So it's not just continuing care, but their care.
So, well, then if I can, since this amendment is in, to ensure that the RFP is in place, I'll amend my vote to a yes, but I want to see that happen. If I could go back to that, do I have to reopen this?
Do we need a four-fifths, because it's financial? Or no?
I think you can, I think on the motion that was made, you can vote to reconsider now.
microphone.
I think on the motion that was previously made, you can agree to reconsider to take it back up for a vote. You can make adjustments to it if necessary, but I don't think you need four-fifths. I think you're okay with three.
And Supervisors, I wanted to also add, as I think about the timing of this, given that RFPs can be put out fairly quickly, I think you should direct the department to do it sooner. I think the department could get out an RFP within the next 30 days, and then you'd have this settled before you move into the 22-23 year, and you could decide then if you're continuing with this or doing something different.
I'd be willing to amend my vote to accommodate for what you just stated, CA Hutchinson.
But you have to make a motion for reconsideration of the item since you took an action.
So if there's a motion?
I move that we reconsider this item.
A motion by Supervisor Pyska?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Scott. Please conduct the roll call.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. And so going back to item 5.3, and re-discussing the terms of this waiver, the waiving of the bidding process to be done in a 30-day increment?
Right, so you'd be directing, the department had to issue an RFP by March 1st.
Okay. Would that be amenable to you, Mr. Director Metcalf?
Yes, absolutely. We're all over it.
Okay, and what I'll do is I'll open it up for public input, just in case there is any comments that would like to be added, or I don't see anybody in the chambers and in the Zoom room, so I'm bringing it back for action.
We just did that. Do we need to do it all over again?
Yes, because we're reconsidering that item with 30 days, rather than by the end of the year that you stated before.
So I make a motion to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, and B, approving agreement between County of Lake and Adventist Health, St. Helena, and Vallejo for acute and patient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute and patient psychiatric hospitalizations for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, and 2022 through 2023, for a maximum compensation of $300,000, and authorize the chair to sign and have an RFP out by March 1st.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
No.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like we can move forward to item 5.15, is it Supervisor Sabatier? Does that sound?
Yes, 5.15.
So 5.15 is approve the continuation of local emergency due to the Pawnee fire incident. And we'll go ahead and give you the microphone.
So the reason I pulled this, hello, hello. The reason I pulled this is because the Pawnee fire is from quite a long time ago. Unfortunately, we've had so many fires that it's hard to remember the, all of the fires that we've had. It's just unfortunate. But the local emergency is continuing for specific reasons, whether that's waiting for insurance, waiting for reimbursement, or whatever the case might be. And there's a lot of these that are somewhat older, and I'm hoping, the reason I pulled this is that I would like to get a consensus from the board, that we get some kind of presentation, so that we know where we are with all of these, because the public sees them again and again and again. It doesn't mean that the emergency in this county is continuing. It just means that we can't close because of Cal OES rules, that until all the financial stuff is final, I'd like to know where we are. How many, how many people are we still waiting on? How many properties still need to be cleaned up? Because there's some public health ones for the LNU, and for, I think there was another, the cash fire is still open. And also, there's the local emergencies, and I'd just like to get an update from staff, because I'm not exactly aware as to where we stand specifically in getting these items closed, and I think it would help the public out to understand why these are still on our agenda as well, on our consent.
Okay. Thank you. And I am looking, is there any other comments from the board? Or would you like to state anything, CA Hutchinson?
Yes, so as you know, these were required to renew these every 30 days, and there once was a time that we couldn't do them on consent. The consent agenda, that did change, but it's, Supervisor is correct, that these are reappearing month after month on the consent agenda, and it's very reasonable to do a brief report out on each one now and then. You may not want to do that every 30 days, but as often as you wish to, we can certainly do that, and I can work with the sheriff and with the public health department, and then also with our disaster finance staff to give you updates on each one of these.
What would be, what would be ideal? You say quarterly, monthly?
Well, they would be due again in 30 days, and so what I was going to suggest is that we have that update for you then.
Okay.
And I'm not looking for a reoccurring. I just think that... I just think that maybe even once a year or something like that, just to kind of understand where we stand. I know that Chair Crandall, you and I worked together to help out with the lasting medicinal complex issues where we were having conversations with CAL OES, and, and maybe there's some places that we might be able to be helpful in, in concluding some of these emergencies. Again, these, these are things that have traumatic emotions attached to it, and to continuously have it on our agenda, just at least to know where it is and what we can do and what is being done to help conclude these things so that we can put a bid in the past.
Okay.
Okay.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I would agree with an annual update, just an annual update as we move forward. Most of the board members, at least, we've sat through at least one presentation, why it's here, why it's showing up. But I think once a year, just reminding our public, you know, what the process is and why we're doing, what we're doing, why it's continuing on there, I think is, is a good, is a good idea.
Annual seem okay? I think the annual.
You know, I definitely also agree with that because I think it came up this morning in public comment too with the COVID. Why is it, are we still in a state of emergency? And just explaining to them why it is that we are.
Yeah, no, my uncle from Kansas asked that question about COVID too, so. Okay, so I'll open it up for public comment. I don't see anyone. So it looks like we know where to go from here when it comes to the update.
And one last thing, if I may? I'm not looking at a specific timeline. I'm not asking for next week. I know that this might take some time to, to gather the information, but I just wanted to ask for it, and when it comes, it comes.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's understood now. Thank you.
Johanna, could I ask you real quickly? What is the next date that you would have these falling on board agenda for the next approval?
I think March 1st. March 1st. About Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. That, that would be the date if that's working for you all.
For March.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, it looks like we need to take action, so.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the continuation of a local emergency due to the Pawnee fire incident.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. So we'll move on to, thank you very much for that. We'll move on to item 7.2, consideration of the following advisory board appointments: Lake County Vector Control, Lake, Lower Lake Cemetery Board, and Law Library Trustee. Supervisor Sabatia.
I have a question about the district of Lower Lake Cemetery, because I noticed that the individual lives in Clear Lake Oaks, and I was not able to put my finger on a map as far as the district, and do they have to live within the district? I was just curious. I don't want to deny this person. I don't know who they are, but at the same time, I'm curious about, Clear Lake Oaks just seemed a little far away from Lower Lake and wasn't sure if that was still within the district or not, and I apologize for not knowing.
And so Supervisors, if you want to take up the other two, I'm going to pull the documents pertaining to the formation of that group and have that answer for you in a minute, but it'll take me a minute to find it if, if you'd like to go forward with the others.
Okay, and so let me find it. There we go. Okay, so we have, I'm used to my iPad, not the computer like this. So we have for the, I think it's Vector Control. Yeah, someone from Cobb, right? Okay. And so we'll do these singularly. You want to go ahead and make the, it looks like you want to be moving. Oh, yeah, sorry. Open it up for public comment. I don't see anybody in Zoom. I don't see anybody here, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Robert Bostock to Lake County Vector Control.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Has to be a voter in the district.
Yes.
Supervisor, okay, Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
One from District 1.
And then so for the next is the Law Trustee.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reappoint Dennis Fordham to the Law Library Trustee, as a Law Library Trustee.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call on that one.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, and then I think, Ms. Grant, did you want to comment on the discussion?
Yes, the, this particular cemetery district actually has property that includes multiple districts. So it's a number of members, are five, it's a combination from District 1, District 2, and District 3. And what the law requires is that the, the members of the legislative body have to be voters in the district. Here you've got multiple districts, so the requirement would be that they'd have to be a voter within one of those three districts. I believe this is the only cemetery district that has this circumstance.
And, and right now, of your current members, there are four of the five seats filled, and three of those reside in Clear Lake Oaks, as does this applicant, and one resides in Lower Lake. It would appear that there isn't a District 2 member at this time.
And I don't think legally there has to be, as long as they're.
In those districts.
Exactly.
Certainly, and having seats filled, of course, is always best.
Supervisor Simon?
Well, with that information, thank you very much, and I'm going to go ahead and nominate Karen Graff to the Lower Lake Cemetery Board.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Should I open it for public comment after that statement, or should I, or can we move forward? I'll go ahead and just save that for a second and look and see if we have anybody, and I don't see anybody in Zoom, and I don't see anybody in the chambers, so I'll bring it back. And there was a motion by Supervisor Simon and a second by Vice Chair Scott, right?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. Thank you. And so we will now move on to calendars, calendars, and we will start with Supervisor Pyska.
Well, I just, I wanted to start with the report that we have high winds for the next 10 days, and even though it's February, yeah, we have, we're in a red flag-ish event right now, even though it's not technically fire season, but the winds are drying out the vegetation, and it's really low humidity, so it's just something to be prepared for just some crazy weather, and hopefully we'll get rain. And then I want to remind everybody about the siren testing. I don't want it to catch anybody off guard, but there's going to be a full three-minute cycle in, for the South County sirens, which is Cobb and in Middletown and Anderson Springs, but the Riviera's are having their first test and a full three-minute test in a community that's never had a siren test. Could be disruptive, so I'm just getting that word out to as many people as I possibly So tomorrow morning, I have the TID Board meeting, and then I'm meeting with a constituent. And Thursday, I've got another meeting with a constituent in the morning. Catching up on things. Friday, we have this, the Home Hardening Meeting, and then I have a meeting at the Kelseyville Sunday is the Fiddler's Jam at Eli Stage Stop, and I met Congressman Thompson there last week, and he brought a flag from the Capitol to mark their 10-year anniversary. It was a little bit late, but he had the flag flown on the 10-year anniversary of the Eli Stage and then brought it, and now it's hanging up there. So when you drive by, you can notice that flag. Monday, I have my meeting with Carol. That's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatia?
Thank you very much. Wanted to thank, I guess, the committee and staff for putting together our diversity training that we just had, or workshop, I guess, not so much training. Apologize if I spoke too much during that training, but I, I did appreciate the content, did appreciate the conversations, especially the, the little breakout rooms where it was a little bit more intimate, and I appreciated the safe space that they created for people to really share their thoughts and their minds on the topic, and looking forward to the second one, I believe. You said it was February 10th, is that correct?
The next one is two weeks from the one we just had, so let's see.
February 10th, that's right.
Yes, it is, the 10th.
I, as I stated earlier, I took part of the RCRC Legislative Update. They're going to be doing that every single month, just talking about legislation that we need to be tracking, things that they're concerned about, not based on their own reasons, but based on what RCRC membership has told them are their priorities to look into. The cannabis tax that we discussed on Tuesday was brought up at this point in time, and that is being worked on. Who knows what that timeline will look like for us to be able to understand how that all kind of comes together. Had a meeting with our Economic Development Task Force. We talked about coming back for a quarterly report, so we'll be doing that probably within the next 45 days, I think. I'm kind of just stating that. Also had a lively conversation with our new Public Health Director with the Syringe Exchange Program, because that was asked to come back to the board, and so that's moving forward and hoping that within the next 30 to 60 days, I can't say a specific, but I think that that's the timeline that we might be looking at for coming back to the board for a future conversation. Let's see here. Had a very awkward meeting yesterday with Chair Crandall. We drafted a letter against, against Sonoma Water for their grant that they were trying to obtain, and some of that grant funding was looking at working towards the Potter Valley Project and positioning themselves in a sense to be prepared for that. We drafted a letter of opposition that the board had signed, and we met with both Department of Water Resources, Sonoma County Supervisor James Gore, as well as Sonoma County Water, and it, we're, we're working on that relationship. I'll, I'll put it that way. It's, it's, it's a difficult conversation to have because we all have needs, and we're all dealing with drought, and we're all dealing with the need to make sure that people have access to water. And I think that I'm hopeful that it was productive enough, that it will open a new line of communication where we can work together rather than continue to work on our silos, and I made sure to let them know that drought doesn't have borders, water doesn't have borders, and that we need to work together to make sure that we all can meet the needs of our communities, not just one way or another. Later today, I'm going to be going, I believe, with Supervisor Simon to visit the Armory with Sheriff Martin. Looking forward to that. Having a meeting tomorrow with the department head and a meeting with our code enforcement team on Thursday morning in City Hall, as they're going to be discussing some of the code enforcement policies that are at the city of Clear Lake and see what it is that we can copy and take over and implement here as we kind of have with the new, we've been talking about it through the AVA, and we kind of updated our administrative fines, and some of that was based on some of the policies that have seemed to work out over in the city of Clear Lake. I have a conversation with a CSAC sponsor later on that day to see if that's a program that might be of interest to the county. I'm going to be meeting, so we've been using Flock Safety System cameras. I'm going to be meeting with them to discuss what other potential programs and avenues they have for us, especially when dealing with illegal dumping. I'm not 100% sure that the Flock system is going to be adequate enough to really attack the illegal dumping situation. I think it's a tool that can be available, but I think it's going to require a lot of capacity from the staff perspective or whoever is working with those cameras to really help out with the illegal dumping compared to easily being able to identify stolen vehicles and things like that. And so they were open for a conversation just to see what was available and what's worked for other communities that they've worked with, so I'm looking forward to that phone call. City of Clear Lake's having a city council meeting that evening at 6:00 PM, and I will be there. And then I, this Saturday, just to let others on the board know, I know that you've had a connection, I believe it's at the American Legion, there will be the memorial for Bob Hopkins, so I know I will be there. And then on Monday, I will be back. We have our Middle Creek Restoration Project meeting happening, my meeting with the CAO, and back here on Tuesday, the 8th, for a board meeting.
What time was the Saturday for Mr. Hopkins?
I'm going to have to get back to you on there. I want to say it was 2:00 PM, but I could be wrong. Let me, let me get that.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Simon?
So finishing up the board meeting today, like Supervisor Sabatia said, going to take the opportunity to tour the Armory, hopefully, and just get some eyes on that. I've seen it from the outside, but it'd be great to walk through that building and look at it. As we do that tomorrow, I have the Space Use Committee meeting. Supervisor Crandall should be on that one, I think. So, and then also on Thursday, I've been asked to sit in on an interview panel for, for the new Napa Lake Sonoma, there was retirement, and I've been asked to interview the, to be on that for CAL FIRE to interview the, the replacements. So I want to thank Shawna Jones for her service, and we'll move from there, so excited about that. You know, we have the weekly planning meeting on Friday, which we've been constantly working on and will continue to do so for the next few years to bring a new program here to Lake County, and we'll have it there on Saturday on, or Sunday. In the afternoon, I have the RDA successor, RDA Board, we'll be talking about the Collier Avenue project. We had to set up another special meeting to get that completed, so we'll be doing that on Monday afternoon. I did want to just talk a little bit about the Risk Reduction Authority meeting we had, was it last week? Yeah, it's running together so much. But, you know, there's continuing conversations, I think, as we move forward there, and like we're talking about, both at the county level throughout the county, is there's a lot of stuff out there, brought it up with RCRC, capacity issues are always a thing there. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to move forward, to make the most, bring the most funds in we can to help move our efforts in wildfire and mitigation and everything as we're going forward. But I think the collaboration that's happening at the Risk Reduction Authority, I just want to thank all the members, all of our nonprofit agencies, BLM, US Forest Service, everyone who's coming there and doing their part, you know, just to protect our communities as we move forward. So just want to say that, and I really feel the energy is going to be moving forward. We're going to make some big strides here this year, and I want to thank Admin for helping us get there. Now we have NCO onboard also, but there's going to be that continual collaboration. I think that's some of the, the best things we can do as a, as a board and, you know, all the agencies and government agencies in the county is working together in one, in one motion going forward. We don't always have to agree on everything, but always keep it in mind that, you know, our constituents come first and giving them the opportunities to just continue to make Lake County better. So I want to thank everybody for that, and, you know, it's hard when you're a volunteer just to show up because there, you know, that's what you're doing, volunteering, and there's a lot of that done in Lake County here that helps us move forward, and I just, today, I think it needs to be, I just wanted to say those words. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Supervisor Simon. Vice Chair Scott?
Tomorrow, Agenda Review at 9:00, and then I'm meeting with a constituent to talk about a project that they would like to bring to District 4. On Thursday, I have Continuum of Care meeting at 3:00, and then on the, on the 4th, I have meetings with Hope Rising. We are losing our executive director, so we're trying to refigure and how we're going to be moving forward with that, so that's why Friday will be. On the 5th, we have Poetry Out Loud that'll be on Zoom. Will be our high school students competing for the spot to go to states with their poetry reading, and then the Fair Foundation Dinner at 6:00 at the fair, and then SafeRx meeting on the 7th and getting ready for Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you. I'm glad, from my calendar, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Meeting, I was glad to see all of the people aboard that. I was engaged for about a good hour, but personal issues, I had to, I had to attend to that. So let's see, tomorrow I have Agenda Review at 9:00 AM, Space Committee at 11:00, the call with Melinda Riviera. Review at 9:00 AM, Space Committee at 11:00. The call with Melinda Rivera from PG&E at 1:00. I'll be attending the East Region Town Hall at the Moose Lodge tomorrow at 4:00 PM, and going out to the CSA in Spring Valley at 7:00. Thursday, I have the AR 6330 Cal 20 Village in Upper Lake CWD project I've been attending for the past couple of months. So that'll be tomorrow at 9:30. It's usually only a real brief meeting. Friday, I'm meeting with another supervisor out of, I want to say Alpine County, to discuss some of the RCRC policies that they're, since I've been on the Regulatory Committee for RCRC, we're looking at some of those adjustments. Looking at possibly the, attending the memorial for Mr. Hopkins, because I played, I think, about a good four or five seasons in his football league back, back in the 2000s. So. And then Monday, CAO meeting at 8:45, Middle Creek Restoration, and then back here on Tuesday at 9:00 AM for the Board Supervisors meeting.
Mr. Chair, I missed one update also. And I, so I want to just announce that our AmeriCorps team, that we were successful, and NCO wrote the grant through support from all the agencies. They're in Lake County. There's a meet and greet kind of happening on Friday. I think it's Apples with AmeriCorps, I think is what they're calling. So their calendar is full. I want to thank all the agencies for stepping up and really doing that. But this is a great program that's helped since the disasters have started to come to Lake County. I want to thank Carol and Admin Office to help work out situations for the housing. That's always a challenge, but we were able to work out something with Central Park and NCO. So Carol, thank you very much for your office being diligent on that, working through that process. These AmeriCorps teams do great work. They not only work on the projects they have done, but they also have community hours they need to commit to. And so I know a lot of folks have stepped up, and it's great to have these young folks here in our county helping. And I just, I missed that, and I just want to say that.
Thank you for that.
I missed something.
Yeah, oh, by all means.
Yesterday, I had a meeting with a big team from PG&E about vegetation management in our county. And, you know, tree mortality was the topic. They are aggressively working in the Cobb area and, and doing secondary inspections, and then they're going to be moving down to the Riviera. I asked that they move that schedule up if they can. One thing that they, they mentioned is if you have a tree that's diseased or dead or dying, and it could fall on their, any of their equipment, the pole, the guy wires, the lines, call them out immediately, and they'll come and remove the tree, even if it's outside of their, their work area. So we're losing trees left and right. They're, you know, working really intensely in the areas where we have a lot of tree mortality, but we do have issues throughout the county. And you don't have to wait for them to come and do an inspection. You can call the 800 number, and they'll come on out and, and take care of that tree right away, to no cost. That's the biggest deal. It's their responsibility to take care of that tree if it can interfere with their infrastructure.
Thank you.
I'm just curious if we can ask the county to put that information on Facebook, on our social media page, so that people are aware what number to call? And I don't want to have a discussion. I was just hoping that, because I'd love to have that information, but I think not everybody's going to hear it here, and I think that it's, if we can.
Yeah, that, we have a, a Tree Mortality Task Force that the RRA is just putting together, and hopefully, we're going to be meeting next week. And part of that is messaging and education.
Okay.
And so I think it'd just be, we had to get the message right, and, and get it out to people, because that is part of it. We have to really, it's more than education, but, but it's definitely communicating with our community about this.
Appreciate it.
All right. With that, it looks like we will be moving into our number eight closed session agenda items. 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9, Delta 1, or D1, City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake, and then 8.2.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just hated to have you go through the whole thing. 8.2 will have to be put over a week.
Okay, and so we're just doing 8.1. 8.2 will be put over for a week. With that, we will go into closed session. Thank you.